But before we start introducing ourselves and letting you know what we believe will be the top issues in the Georgia General Assembly in the 2013 Assembly, as well as listening to what mutually should be the top priorities in the 2013. We want to, in recognition of just life, we're asking all of you out to stand up and let's have a moment of silence for the Glass family, but life is more important than anything else. So keep a thought of it as silence, please. Thank you all very much. The Rockdale delegation, and that is all members, on behalf of all members of the delegation, we are making a donation to the Glass family on behalf of their loss and the need to just have some type of expenses, and we're going to do that, as all of you all know, through the Wacoia Bank. Well Sparkle, Wacoia, if you call it one thing, they're going to take the money, but it is, as Pam said, the Well Sparkle. Thanks now. I would like to, on behalf of the delegation, introduce myself first, ask everyone to introduce themselves, and then we will come back with an overview of what we plan to do. But before we have the overview, Senator Ramsey will introduce those elected officials that are here today. Of course, my name is Pam Stevenson. I represent currently House District 92, which will become House District 90 at 10:00 January 14th, Monday, 2013.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ronald Ramsey, and I'm your State Senator in District 43. I represent approximately 61,000 citizens in Rockdale County. I represent all of the county except for the four southern precincts of Honey Creek, McNabb, excuse me, McNabb, Barstow, and Lorraine. At this time, I would like to introduce our Chief Executive Officer, Chairman of the County, Mr. Richard Oden. Please answer. I see our Clerk of Superior Courts, Mr. Bruce A. Wilson, and I see our School Board Member, Katrina Young. I do apologize. And who else? And please stand, ma'am, as a new School Board Member, and please introduce yourselves.
Karen Farmer.
Did I miss anyone? I don't have enough glasses on either. Well, thank you all for being here. We can look forward to serving you again, and look forward to productive behalf of citizens of Rockdale County.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Saint Representative Pam Dickerson. I represent the 95th District, so it'll be the 113th, which is Rockdale and most of Newton. And I'm looking forward, again, this will be my second term, to serve with all of the citizens of the state of Georgia. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dee Dawkins-Hager, and this is Amari, and I represent House District 93, which will soon be House District 91, and it covers Rockdale coming from 212 all the way going into 138 and almost to...
What is your...
To Brentwood.
Okay. Ten precincts.
Good morning. I'm Tom Kirby. I represent District 107, and on Monday it'll become District 114. That is the western one-third of Walton County. I have one and a half precincts in Barrett County up to Fort Yargo, I have one and a half precincts in Gwinnett County, and then here in Rockdale County, I'm north of the Yellow River with Bethel, Hightower, and a little part of Old Town, so Horse Park. That's added to the 107, it becomes the 114, and happy to be part of the Rockdale delegation.
Tom, do you want to let everyone know, on behalf of Dale, that he is...
Dale Rutledge represents a few precincts in the southern part of the Rockdale County. Dale's out of Henry County, and I don't know his number, but do you know that number down there?
113 is Pam's.
114, so 109. Dale's on a business trip in Orlando, sending his apologies. He, like a lot of us, he got to get some last-minute business done before we get to the legislative session, so he wanted to be here today, but unfortunately, that trip was already scheduled. So, thank you.
And I'm not certain if Senator Jeffries will be here with us. He represents District 17, and he represents South Rockdale, so he may be with us. If not, I'd like to congratulate him on being appointed by the Governor as one of the floor leaders. So we look forward to working with him in that regard.
I'm Darshaun Kendrick. I represent State House District 94, which currently used to have and is still in the middle of Rockdale County. Through redistricting, I won't have any of Rockdale County in my district, but until next Monday at 10:00, I still represent Rockdale County, so it's good to me.
And let's give Darshaun a hand, she's other passion.
On behalf of Member-Elect, Social Media Queen, my name is Trina. On behalf of Representative-Elect Anderson, the newly-formed House District 92, she as well will not be able to be here because she has a busy visiting appointment, but she sends her greetings and support for what we're going to do in Rockdale County. Now, I always want us to start off with just giving an overview of the 2012, and it's going to be very, very brief, because we want to hear from you, as well as to talk a little bit about what we know. My colleagues will join in, and as Representative Kirby said, he's sitting to the left of us today, so he's going to be talking like that. It's our joke of we're to the right of issues or to the left of issues. But the reality is that everyone sitting at this table just cares about the people that we represent. We don't speak in terms of who exactly and what party, or what is important to the people that we serve. I believe that it's uncontroversial that, once again, the budget will dominate the Georgia General Assembly in 2013. If anyone disagrees with me at any time, speak up. But we also know that the Governor has committed himself to the funding of the criminal justice reform, as well as $50 million for the Savannah deep hiring. At least, that's the opinion. I also think that it is uncontroversial that, because of recent incidents, that there's going to be legislation regarding the Second Amendment rights. How that, what form it's going to take, I don't know, but that there will be some legislation. There's also going to be heard this year, ethics reform, the decrease to Speaker of the House saying we want to all out ban on that. There is, near and dear to me, the issue regarding Medicaid expansion appears, because the Governor has said very clearly that we're not going to entertain the federal Medicaid expansion, but we're going to look at the hospital bed taxes started several years ago, and we're going to say to the hospitals, we want that continued. The guns in school, while the Second Amendment rights legislation will probably cover how do you do it, but the issue of if, when, where, and under what circumstances that guns in schools and violence can be curtailed will be a major look at. The idea of vouchers, there has been a lot of talk regarding the Georgia's program that lets businesses and individuals get tax credit for the money that finances private school scholarships. I think that may be weave in to, as we all know, Amendment One, that allow the reformation of charter schools passed, so, and weaving in that will come some or one, at least that's what it appears, on the vouchers. The teachers evaluations and the funding are saying, we've been told, is going to be a big issue. And last but not least, and I have no evidence, it's just based on the prefiled bills, and what we know is going to happen is called the new stadium for the vouchers. Whether or not it's going to be approved or not will be highly debated, and highly debated in the Golden Dome. But just let me tell you about way of history before we opening up to the other legislators, and tell you what their actions are. I want to tell you that in 2012, there were 1,556 bills introduced. Of those, 517 passed, 401 were generated by the House, 116 were generated by the Senate. Bear in mind, those bills included ones that were introduced in 2011 that were considered in 2012, because in the two-year sessions, those bills, for example, in 2012, anything that is not passed will bind itself over to 2013. So, as opposed, and the Governor, of those that passed, the Governor signed 395, vetoing only six. And I said only because there has been oftentimes where the Governor vetoed more bills than that. But given the background, we can open it up to those areas, and I'll ask the sitting reps and Senators, if they would like to just talk about the committees that they serve, what they think is going to be facing us, and then we could take from our constituents, what is it that's most appealing for you to see us do? When we come back before you, and quarter we report, so how often we're going to report that? This is our opportunity to understand and learn, and then speak for you, because we know what we're speaking of. So I'm going to start. I actually serve on the Health and Human Services Committee, Judiciary Committee, and Intergovernmental Coordination. And Intergovernmental Coordination is the committee that passes local legislation. Only, I believe, positive thing that we agree on is that we have completed the reapportionment. Is that correct? Because that was long and quite a adversarial relationship. But we're back with those. I'm going to go to my right person, ask Representative Shine, if she would address those issues that she feels important in very short form, because we're going to spend at least, I think we would like to spend at least 45 minutes, just listening and answering questions from the people who are here.
Okay. Well, thank you. I won't take much time. I'm sure you want to hear from people who are actually going to be representing you starting this session. I sit on the Children and Youth Interstate Cooperation and Special Rules Committee, and we haven't got new assignments for the committee, so I don't know what I'll be serving for the next two years. I just want to briefly touch on ethics reform, healthcare, and then the Falcon Stadium. I had an opportunity to meet with the Georgia World Congress Center. They had sort of an information session for us, and answered our questions, and people that were going to be the underwriting for the funding, and the Chairman of the Board, the Executive Director, and lots of legislators were there. So I'm particularly interested in hearing what you think about that, because there's a lot of things going on, being talked about in the media that are not necessarily true, you know, both good and bad. So I would welcome the pleasure to try to correct anything that you might have heard of that is not necessarily true. With regards to healthcare, this is something that I have heard a lot about, expanding the Medicare, Affordable Care Act to millions more by making sure that the Governor participates in the program. The Governor has said he's not going to participate, he's worried about the cost. Georgia has a balanced budget, we're not like the federal government, we can't sort of go out and borrow money, so whatever revenue we bring in, that's the own revenue that we can spend. But the way that it would work if it was expanded, is that the government would pay, the federal government would pay for it, expand it for three years, and then it would be 90% after three years. So it's not sort of as onerous as people might say that it is, but again, that's something that the Governor is, is going to have to keep pressure on in order to take care of it. And then the last thing is ethics reform, and I know that this is a hot topic, and even I even disagree with some people in my own party. You know, I don't think there's going to be a solution that's going to sort of satisfy everyone, but I will say, you know, there are certain people that sort of have brought this issue to a head, and so now we're looking at ethics reform, sort of sweeping ethics reform. The Speaker of the House appointed a committee of people to study how ethics reform is done in other states, and they're going to provide some recommendations. The Senate has already approved in their own rules a $100 gift ban, and I think it's just something we're going to have to take a look at a little closer. For example, I sponsor a business owners day at Capital event every year, and lobbyists pay for it, I'm going to be honest. So if business owners come down there, you wouldn't have sort of the nice reception that we have for you, to tell you about sort of what resources are coming out from the Governor's office and from these agencies. So I just want us to take a comprehensive look at ethics reform, don't throw the baby out with the bad water, but obviously, something needs to be done. Okay?
Good morning again, everyone. The State Senate is currently under reconstruction. As you may know, unfortunately, for the last four years, the State Senate has been in absolute turmoil. There was a group of individuals who met and basically took over the Lieutenant Governor's elected powers. So Lieutenant Governor's role for the last seven years has been primarily ceremonial, so it has been a quite acrimonious setting there, and that's why we've had a lot of difficulty getting anything productive with citizens done. We now have a new Majority Leader in Senator Ronnie Chance, and a new President Pro Tem in David Schaefer, and we are hopeful that we are going to have more synergy and cooperation, even among Republican leadership, let alone us Democrats, so that we can work together on your behalf. There have yet to be any many office assignments. I continue to stay in my office, which is 303A, in the Coverdale Office Building. That is your office. Feel free to come down at any time. We currently have, don't have new committee assignments, but currently, I sit on Judiciary, Special Judiciary, Government Oversight, Insurance, and Labor, and I have a special appointment to Georgia World Congress Center authority. And so, as Representative Kendrick has said, you know, please keep an open mind about that. When the initial proposals came for the New Falcon Stadium, I was hesitant. I've sat in the meetings for the last two years and heard these discussions, and was not very hopeful that it would be something that I could support. However, once they changed the funding model for, toward the hotel motel tax model, then I was a little more open, because as you know, several years ago, we were able to pass a hotel motel tax for the City of Conyers. And that, and that bill has generated in excess of a million dollars on behalf of the City of Conyers at this time. And what you may know is hotel motel taxes are paid by whom? Tourists, not the people who live here. And so, with Atlanta being the kind of international city it is, attracting all corporations for conventions and athletic events, you know we have a host of people coming here every day, every week, and they bring their money, and that's a good thing, so they can help us pay for it. But the rub is going to be, well, I live in Savannah, so I don't want my citizens from Savannah coming to Atlanta and being taxed again. So that is going to be a big part of that argument. Touching again on the budget, on May 7th, the Governor passed a $19.3 billion budget. Although revenues have been up in the last quarter, they still, it's projected that they will still fall short of the revenues that are going to be needed to support a 2014 budget, and some estimates say that it could be in the range of a billion dollars short. So the Governor's already asking many state departments, except K-12 education, to look at slashing their budgets at about 3.1%. So let's, so if you work in state government, or if you're a beneficiary of state government, just know that that is what's going on, it's tightening belts to have to try to curb the big hit that we know that we're going to get. With respect to ethics reform, it is clearly something that is needed. However, we have to work through it very carefully. I did personally sign the $100 contribution pledge with the Georgia Common Cause, because I can't buy home dinner, and all of us can buy home dinner, but as Representative Kendrick says, we do have business partners in the state and community who want to help us help you. And so sometimes, it is necessary for us to involve them on your behalf. So we'll just have to work through that very, very carefully, and to get a result from you. So we love your input here today, and after we introduce ourselves, we will listen and come away with something that will benefit you, but as Representative Stevenson said, you heard the large number of bills that are filed every year, and you hear the small number that are actually signed by the Governor. I'm certain that everyone in this room has a great idea that we wish we could file a bill on your behalf and get it passed, but that just may not be the case. But quickly, I'll tell you what I am working on. City of Conyers, I spoke with the Mayor, they have some cleanup language they want in their charter regarding their election terms, and the delegation will be reviewing that and assisting them in taking care of that. I too was very moved by the Newtown massacre, and I know that most school districts have the benefit of SROs or school resource options, primarily in high schools and middle schools. And it was just so great, I just sat in my bed in tears really, to see how those children and teachers were massacred, and they were absolutely helpless. So I've worked on some legislation that, I got the draft back yesterday from Legislative Council, that would allow, and we understand the big budget hits, and I'll be free. However, there are many people in our communities who are retired police officers, law enforcement personnel, who volunteer their time in schools, and the lowest level professionals in schools are what's called paraprofessionals. So we could hire someone with a minimum hit to a school budget, who would be a paraprofessional, who's a licensed certified post peace officer standard training council certified officer, who could serve a dual role with a subdued concealed weapon. So if someone came inside of a school, there would be some hope for the people inside of that school. That's my personal belief, I'm working on it, I'm open to all of your thoughts and input in that regard. And lastly, I'm re-filing a resolution of legislation that I passed twice through the Senate, and have not been able to get over to the House, and that's the requiring the Board of Partners and Proloves to issue a certification of restoration of voting rights. And because many people make mistakes, we have low-level felons who, as a matter of law, once they complete their sentences, have a right to have their voting rights restored. The problem is, nine and a half out of 10 people, even lawyers and judges in this state do not know it. And so this would assist election boards, it would assist the Board of Partners and Proloves, and citizens at large to reactivate into the larger society by voting and participating otherwise. Thank you so much. Excuse me. Let me recognize our new Tax Commissioner, Mr. R.J. Hadley. Please stand, let me recognize. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Saint Representative Pam Dickerson. I serve on three committees. We have forgotten your assignments, as I said, that's Children and Youth, State Planning, as well as Games, Fishing, Parks. I did introduce a bill last year, it got as far as Senate rules, I'm really hoping that I prefouled that this bill will pass this year, go all the way through. I would like to thank my House members for passing it last year, the Senate Committee, so hopefully with a new rules Chairman will get passed. Thank you for the turn.
A little more thought.
Thank you. And that bill impacted, in the most important, everyone in the whole state of Georgia, because it was a food bill, and there was exempt churches, schools, and nonprofits from having to fill out extra paperwork through the Health Department. There's an email running around now that someone else is trying to redo that bill, so I've sent out my email saying that the bill is already in place, it was, the Department of Agriculture, as well as Public Health endorsed the bill, so it is a good bill, the language is good, because they took out all the language and put in good language so that the bill wouldn't pass without any, anyone trying to stop the bill. So hopefully, again, like I said, that bill will pass. Also, my cyberbullying bill, that bill now, someone else is coming up with some language on a cyberbullying bill. I'm hoping, again, that that bill will get some kind of, you know, fire under it again, because I did introduce that bill, and others are wanting to introduce that same type of cyberbullying bill. So I'm really hoping that that bill too, again, will pass once I prefouled that bill, as well as some local legislation in Newy County that I'll be doing. I think the concern for me this year, as well as other representatives, would be the hospital fare tax bill. I've been talking to Rockdale Hospital, they're very concerned about that, in terms of that money. It has a lot to do with the profits, nonprofits, and who gets what, and the hospital here is really concerned that if that bill does not stay intact, that it will impact them heavily. So I'm hoping that we can keep that bill going. There are a lot of things on our plate this year, especially with education, you know, healthcare, from Medicaid to everything. So we just ask for, like our Chairman said, your support, give us your input, so we'll know what we need to do. We know what we need to do, we just need to get it done, you know, with the help of voices from the public, because a lot of times, when you come to those committee meetings and they hear you, just like they hear us, it does have an impact. So if there's something that they're of special interest to you, and there's a meeting on it, a special committee meeting, if you would like to get in touch with one of us to be down at the committee meetings to voice your opinion, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good morning again. I'm Dee Dawkins-Hager. I can hardly... Want to speak louder?
Please.
I'm going to do the best I can for you. Okay, so I'm Dee Dawkins-Hager. Is that better for you? Because my voice is a little... Okay, so I'm Dee Dawkins-Hager again. I serve on banks and banking, industrial relations, and human relations and aging. This past session, I don't know if you all are aware, Georgia's in the top five states for banks that go bankrupt and will not be able to keep their solvency, so we're trying to put some things in place to keep so many banks in Georgia from going under. I'm not sure if y'all are even aware of that. There are a lot of banks in Georgia, actually, so we've tried to take a special look at that. Also, in industrial relation, we have several bills that have come through. One of those bills deals with trying to make sure that parents are able to take off from work to attend meetings at their children's school. And so I passed, I introduced legislation when I first came to the House, that would make it mandatory for children who were failing, for their parents to attend parent-teacher conferences. So it keeps getting stuck in the Education Committee, but one of the reasons is because they said parents cannot get to the meetings. So Representative Roger Bruce has brought to our committee, industrial relations, in the past probably six years, a bill that would allow parents to have four hours per year to come to their parents, their children's school, whether it's for a parent-teacher conference or a PTA meeting. And so that's currently still stuck in the Industrial Relations Committee. For this upcoming session, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the new parent trigger legislation that's going to be introduced by Representative Ed Lindsey. And basically, this legislation will allow parents who are unhappy with their current public school to be able to pull the trigger, in other words, to be able to turn that school into a charter school. And it only takes a petition on behalf of one parent, if they get enough of the stakeholders in that particular public school that wants to change it to a charter school, then they will be able to do that. That's why it's called the Parent Trigger Act, and it's already passed in nine states in the United States, and so that's something we really need to take a look at, because when Representative Lindsey introduced the amendment last year for Amendment One, it moved very quickly, and it passed, and so we need to pay close attention to the parent triggers. And so I'm going to sit down, because I really do want to hear from you all today. Thank you.
Well, good morning again. I am Tom Kirby, I represent District 114, the north part of Rockdale County. First thing to tell you, you know, we're not Washington. It's not nearly the partisan bickering you hear out of Washington down there. Pam was joking, we were joking, I'm sitting on the left side of the table, I'm not to the left of this script too often. But at the same time, doesn't mean we don't agree with some things. We've already talked a little bit about the Georgia Dome, the new stadium. You know, House Bill 903 passed in 2010, it renewed that hotel motel tax for Atlanta, unincorporated Fulton County through... It renewed that hotel motel tax for Atlanta, unincorporated Fulton County through 2015, with 39.6% of that money specifically delegated for paying, servicing that debt at the Georgia Dome and the successor stadium. When you, the meet and greet they had down at the World Congress Center Authority shed a lot of different information. They already have a tax in place to pay for the stadium, and you've got Arthur Blank gonna put in $700 million of the Dome money, and any cost overruns he's gonna take care of. What it really comes down to, Arthur Blank says Falcons aren't gonna renew their lease on the Georgia Dome. If he's willing to build his own stadium in Swanee, open outdoors, $700 billion stadium. Senator, if I get any of this wrong, let me know. So the two things we'll be really looking at, number one, we've got the World Congress Center Authority that we've given the responsibility to run in the Georgia Dome, Centennial Olympic Park, the World Congress Center. You know, are we to usurp that authority and all of a sudden go from an oversight role to a control role as a general assembly? Looking at the numbers and how profitable the job they've done, you know, the initial thought is they've done a really good job. You've got somebody out there running the thing, let them continue to run it. And all they're asking for is that we do have to increase their bond cap by $100 million. Now, that's a lot of money to you and I. Right now, we're running between 5.8 and 7% debt for the state of Georgia. We've got a balanced budget requirement for the state. The debt comes from servicing of bonds. We keep it below 8% by goal, 10% by statute. This $100 million is going to add less than a half a percent to the debt ratio compared to our revenue streams, depending on, and that range from 5.8 to 7, depending on projections of revenue streams and where it actually comes in. So it's not a concrete number. The economists would tell you 15 to 18% of well-managed debt's where you should be. Seven, you know, it's always cheaper to spend somebody else's money than your own money. So that's the first question we're gonna have to be asking before we, you know, before we get in their cap. Do we want to start controlling this authority, or do we want to continue the oversight role and look at the debt ratio? The second thing is, what's best for the state of Georgia? We're all up here representing our district, but we look at what's best for the state of Georgia. Is it better for the Falcons to build their own new, open-air, outdoor stadium up around Swanee? Or the Georgia Dome would actually go from a revenue generator to something that's actually losing money? Or is it better to put in $300 million in debt? Most of it paid from people from out of state coming to Atlanta and allow the retractable roof stadium to be built down there? And all the projections and all the money you hear, what the state puts, they're asking the state and the World Congress Center Authority to do, that's all they're gonna do. Cost overruns are the Falcons. Operating risk actually goes to the Atlanta Falcons. So there's a lot to this deal. The one other thing that we've gotta look at, I think, is I want to hear from the mayor, Christine Reed. When the Congress Center Authority tells me they have infrastructure in place and plans to change the infrastructure and revitalization projects, and there is part of that same hotel tax that was allocated for the city of Atlanta, you know, I'd like to hear the city tell me they actually got it, you know, other than somebody, a third party, saying, well, the city says they can take care of this. So there's a lot we've gotta look at and decide. I am very disappointed in our media, surprise, surprise, they don't always tell you straight up what's going on on this. I've had a lot of constituents think this is about passing a new tax that the people of the state of Georgia were paid to build this stadium for the Falcons. And that's, we're a long way from that. This is about increasing a bond cap that the World Congress Center Authority is operating on. And it sounds like a lot of us are in agreement. We're learning that this was a little different than we thought, and we're having a lot of questions that we've gotta look into. So don't let the media bias your opinion. We're happy to, because I think a lot of people up here, our job as much as anything is to make sure that you're keeping as best accurate information that we can give you and not spend it too much or try to hide it behind anything. Guns are gonna be big. I like Senator Ramsey's thoughts. I also like Representative Battle's House Bill 28 that he's pre-fired, if you haven't heard that one. This one would allow, not require, but allow schools administrators to go through the training and qualifications that law enforcement goes for firearms. And if they are properly trained and qualified, then an administrator would be allowed, if the school system so wishes, to carry a firearm during those school functions. The SROs here in a lot of our district, we have those guys, there are gals in place, but like in Walton County Schools, they're in our middle schools and our high schools. We didn't have any SROs at elementary school. The retired law enforcement people, retired military people that have stepped forward, there's some opportunities to utilize, it looks like the Senator's talking about, are again, I want people who are qualified and trained, not just somebody who thinks it's a good idea to have a gun in the school. I don't want that at all. So I think we'll be looking at those type of issues and still protecting our Second Amendment of the Constitution and right to gun ownership. The budget battle will be long and arduous. The hospital bed tax, I wish we'd get away from that, as we call it, the Medicaid Provider Program. And we don't always like to think the federal government does, but in this program, basically, we collect $200 million in Medicaid Provider Program costs from these hospitals, give it to Washington, and they give us over $600 million back. And that $600 million would be a gap in the budget if this is not renewed, and that expired on December 31st. So right now, we're operating without it. And that's about a 1.4%, 1.45% fee on those beds. A big chunk of that money goes to Grayden because it goes to pay for the engine care service. And like children's healthcare, I know they've already contacted me, they need it for the engine care. A lot of engine care in Atlanta, you know, when you have a delivery that has a business model, they stabilize somebody without the ability to pay and then give them down to Grayden, and Grayden takes over from there. You know, they're the ones that sit there saying, you know, we'd like to see something else, but we understand Grayden, and this program may be needed to continue that engine care service. So that's something we'll be looking at in the budget battles as well. One bill that I'm working on is a ban of human animal hybrids. And this is where they've taken human embryos and put them in jellyfish cells to make glow-in-the-dark human embryos. They've taken human embryos and put them in cow cells. And they've been mixing these, and under the guise of it's not 100% human, in the name of research, they feel they can do whatever they want to. And I see the looks of people every time I talk about this, and this is not a partisan issue at all. Everybody says this is Frankenstein stuff. We don't need to be doing, you know, and every place I go, people agree this. The hard thing on a bill like this is not to kill valid, good research that has its use in writing the bill and the wording that does what we want it to do. But I think we've got a good draft form. We're still working with several groups on this. I don't know who's gonna be the one to actually carry the bill. I hope I get to, but somebody with more strikes than they're a few more years, Mike. And, but that's one I think we can all get behind. Make sure the wording's right so it doesn't kill the scientific community and what's valuable. The last thing I did to any of my committees, did I? Right now, I serve on the Agriculture Committee, the Industrial Relations Committee, and the Human Relations and Aging Committee. Like everybody else, haven't got these new committee assignments yet. I didn't request anything changed, but they asked me about some other committees where I might pick and nudge.
Thank you.
There's something in the sound, it's tapping, it's just awful. Might be better without it.
Better without it, yeah, yeah. As I gave the overview on behalf of the entire delegation, I want to go back and just tell you very briefly those things that are near and dear to me. And I didn't say in the overview that I do believe the Secretary of State is gonna fix that license renewal problem, the driver's license renewal problem, because it's taken way too long. There's been so much feedback. But for me, my passion in service has to do with the vulnerable population, be it the children, the elderly, the disabled, or those that are ill. And one may say that's a segment of the population, but when it becomes you, it's all 9 million people in Georgia. Make no mistake about that. The hospital bed tax as an answer to Medicaid expansion, maybe the answer in 2012 should not be, but we may not have anything else in place. Remember, the hospital bed tax, it came about because about eight years ago, the nursing homes started a bed tax. The nursing home population is about 9% proprietary facilities, as compared to hospitals in our state, what were 50% are not-for-profit. The governor told the hospitals that accept a bed tax, or in the alternative, we're gonna tax your property. So what do you think happened? And it has been a feeder into hospitals that at least are dear to me because they serve those that don't have resources to healthcare benefits. But we need to take the opportunity in Georgia to spend, even if we pass the hospital bed tax because we don't have an option this year, that we look at something that will resolve the problem. The hospital bed tax looks at the problem, what I would call horizontally. That's the status quo. Medicaid still does not cover families. So if we don't fix the big problem, we're gonna spend more money continuing with the horizontal approach versus looking at how do we expand, or I call it realign the monies that we spend, that's Medicaid monies. How do we harmonize it with Medicare? And more importantly, how do we send the message back to Congress that we want to see a program that has the flexibility of the states to expand, but with oversight on what is called a minimum package? The other issue is the juvenile justice issue. I forgot to mention that. We passed it in the House. It was a lot of work. I actually helped on huge parts of it, went to the Senate. Because with so much work, it did not pass, but hopefully that will come back. I'm gonna tell you when we start talking about how do we reach the vulnerable population, which includes the children and juvenile justice, how do we reach Medicaid expansion, it is time for us to look at what we did in Senate Bill 3, when we did what we thought was a good thing in Georgia called healthcare, the reform of malpractice insurance. Ordinary people, now, was there abuse in the system by attorneys? Absolutely. The question is, did we go too far in limiting individual rights to court? There's only a few attorneys now that even look at it, and this is no disregard to hospitals because the liabilities have gone up. But we have to find a better system of holding people accountable while individuals have access to the courts. Because there are things that are going on that should not, for example, you can't settle a case even if you want to. If a hospital or primarily a physician who wants to, we'll get on the National Practitioners' Data thing, that is contrived, indicated for all types of settlement negotiations. And when we have people in our communities that are harmed by laws that we make, we need to stand up and speak out about it. And that is no disregard to any hospital provider group, because hospitals, even with the bed tax, when we say hospital bed tax, we're assuming that hospitals are the entry point into the healthcare system, and it should never be. Prevention must be the entry into the healthcare delivery system. We also have to join that with the mental health system and with the Department of Behavior Health so that we have the best amount of money for the dollars that we spend. It makes no sense for someone to go to a physician who has one part of the record and not see the holistic approach to an individual. So those are mine. I could go on, but I can tell you that even in education, when we need to develop more money for funding for staff, we need to look at harmonizing the state laws on how we approach conduct, discipline for the school districts, and who they follow and how it follows. Because these things are not consistent, they aren't harmonized. I am very much an advocate for local districts being able to put forth their own agendas in terms of that. But it must be guided by what is called an umbrella of what constitutes consistent conduct. After all, 9 million people live in Georgia, all the children of Georgia should be subjected to the same level of caring. And with that, I'm gonna stop because I'm gonna keep going on. And we want to hear from you all. So as you have questions, please raise your hand, and we're ready. I'm gonna start with this row, and then I want to go back. Go ahead.
Yes, mine is basically a two-part question. You stated that you were working with DJJ. I was in contact with the Department of Juvenile Justice. Here in Rockdale County, we are lacking something, which is a youth detention center for our community. Right now, we have to have our transportation from the Sheriff's Department go off.
It goes to Gwinnett, doesn't it?
Yeah, they go to Gwinnett. Right now, we are housing our children in Gwinnett and Fulton County. We have a transportation department from the Sheriff's Department, Rockdale County, that has to expend their manpower to go to Gwinnett and Fulton to bring our children to court in Rockdale County. We have money that they are asking for to set up a 60-bed facility in Rockdale County, very close to the jail by 911 Chambers Drive. I think this is very important for our community, where it would be saving the community money as opposed to having our offices removed from the street to take children from different counties over here. And the second thing, if you don't mind, is, and I know Senator Ramsey's very familiar with this, is Senate Bill 290, which is a Georgia Innocence Inquiry Commission. As much as I hate to say this, we do have people in our prisons that are factually innocent. And they are doing time in our prisons because they do not have another recourse to get help to prove their factual innocence, where this would establish a nine-commissioner panel, which would be headed by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court in Georgia, which is something I feel is very important for all of the state of Georgia, where we have loved ones and everybody else in prison that are factually innocent. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond briefly to that? And I have worked with Mr. Minkoff on the Senate Bill 290, the innocent commission, and I appreciate his work and advocacy in the community. Now that I approached him, he's an attorney, so I believe we better understand this concept rather than his predecessor. We may be able to get some allowance on that bill this time. You've also mentioned to me the issue of DJJ and youth facility. I was with the newest member of the Board of Juvenile Justice last night. And not only the factors that you mentioned, the police officers on the street and having transport, unfortunately, when our youth run afoul of the law, they are detained. And so it is a hardship on them and you as parents to have to travel to Atlanta or to Gwinnett to see them and visit them while those matters are being worked out. So, but that is a community issue, and that is something that we all have to talk about to see what works best for this community. All right?
Thank you. The next row? Well, I'm gonna come back since I started with the third row, and give this gentleman right here, and then I'll come back to you. Gentlemen, you're gonna be next.
Is it me?
Yes.
I'm a Falcon fan, supporter. I think the golden opportunity here is that you support Arthur Blank based on experience from other cities. If he's willing to put up his money and any override or cost, I think legislators that you guys should support the new stadium downtown. Just consider this, taken from a movie. There's a lot of hotels on 20 and motels, even at Stonecrash Mall, these hotels wasn't completed. If you get a new stadium here, you have to consider the fact that that would look, other words, they would look at that as a Super Bowl contention. And that brings in millions of dollars. Even on this, the Super Bowl they're gonna have in New Orleans, I'm talking to people from here that's actually gone, they're staying in Biloxi, Mississippi. So there's a golden opportunity to build that stadium downtown. It will put you in line for the Olympics later, because when people come to this area in Atlanta, there's not a lot of hotel motels that's reasonable that they can stay in. But in the outer cities, Conyers, Rockdale County, we have five or six motels, hotels down there that could actually use the funding during the year if we got that stadium in there. And just look at what's going on in the Jerry, Derek Dallas, what he did there, even though he spent a billion dollars, but look at the money that they're taking in and the surrounding. They're gonna have events in that stadium probably all year round. So if you're looking at employment, you're looking at what it's gonna do if you let Mr. Blank go somewhere else, I think that's gonna be a tragedy. That's just my opinion, and you should support the new stadium downtown.
Thank you, Deacon.
I think one of the bigger issues, and this is what some of the legislators that were at the meeting, it's about an opportunity cost. For example, you guys in here, and you're missing out on time spending with your family or in your yard or whatever it is that you do on a Saturday morning. And so some of the concerns was, were that you're taking a hundred million dollars, or, you know, the bond is gonna raise past a hundred million dollars. And we talk about tourism and generating income. But as you know, the T-Sloth sale is this past summer. And so some people believe that that hundred million dollars is a lost opportunity cost that you can put towards infrastructure. In theory, do the same thing. Bring people in, bring businesses in, and generate the type of revenue that you're talking about. Just tell me what the other side is saying.
You're just saying?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
So are you... So may I just ask, first and final, are you for it? Are you saying you don't like the idea? So I know where I'm, you know, what's going on. You know, in all honesty. And I mean, just honestly back and forth. Because, you know, everybody's talking about, you know, our Falcons. I mean, hell, they're in the playoff this weekend. So come on now. I mean, let me know what I'll be...
I'm gonna speak on behalf of, because you had the... No, we're not gonna... No, because we have too many people want questions. Because those that have already made up their mind shouldn't, because you don't have all the information yet. So what I'm saying is that when Atlanta asks for, this is what we need, it appears to be, at least on my behalf, in order to move me away from that idea, the information has to tell me that it is monies that are better spent otherwise. Other than that, I always go with what the local government thinks that is best and what the committee comes up with that says it, because I don't see all the downsides. And if anyone else can raise their hands that they see more downsides.
You're toning down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm saying, I believe that we haven't... The reason why you go and you debate issues is because we don't have all the information. I believe that's what we said earlier. But when a local entity says, this is what we need, at least for me, it would take a lot of information to move me from that yes to a no. And I believe that all of us at this table is open now to receive the information so that we can make that decision. At least I am.
Y'all haven't received any information?
We have not, except for those people that are on the committee. I have received information, because I have a tendency to dip in everybody's committee. But for those that really want to have information, I don't know that they have. And I'm talking about the 180 members of the House that have to make the decision. But for us, I don't know anyone here that would say no to that idea that's sitting at this table.
Who are the stakeholders and who are the decision makers?
May I come back to that? The stakeholders are the people of Georgia. The decision makers are those people that represent them.
Which is you.
It's us. That's why we're listening, and we heard the yes. And we're gonna take that back. Mr. North, did you have a question?
But just allow me to add, it will change. Whatever we know about it today, it will change. That's what the legislative and legislative process is all about. Once we actually get that bill into a committee, ladies and gentlemen, my experience in the last six years is what starts on this end is not what comes out on the other end. And as much as Arthur Blank and the government and Mayor Reed think they have the issues locked down, they have the entire House delegation and the entire Senate delegation who are going to have their input. And there are going to be negotiations, and there are going to be trade-offs. So what we can commit to you is that as the debate evolves, we will continue to bring that information back to you. Because we can't make a decision today. I've already given you my position on it. But the rest of the representatives who have not had the opportunity to be in the meetings cannot do that at this point. But we will... And I hope that everyone in here signed up. If you did not sign up and leave your email, please do so, because that's my best means of communication. I send out my email newsletter, and I will update you on this issue quickly, if possible.
And we will be able to, before it takes place, to inform you of the information we've obtained, as well as to tell you how we're voting and what position we're taking. And we should do that before we vote. That's what we do. But I'm gonna go here, and then I'm coming back to the end. Once we come back, the clerk will have a question.
Mr. Kirby?
This man.
Representative Kirby mentioned the gun bills that will be presented. And last year, Senate Bill 493 made it all the way, I believe out of committee. That was the bill that authorized eighteen to twenty-one euros to carry weapons. And what I understood is to say, if it didn't get signed this year, it could possibly still come up... I'm sorry, it didn't get signed last year, but it'll still come up?
Bills that were not passed in 2012?
Yes.
All died.
All died.
Every bill, even the ones we had talked about that we're gonna bring up, you're gonna have to refile them. Everything has to be refiled in the two-year cycle. It ended 2012. Every bill that we will be looking at in 2013, while they may be the same, but they're new bills, they will have to refile them again.
Well, there were several pre-filing bills dealing with ability to carry concealed weapons. Secondary institutions, as well as churches.
There have been fourteen pre-filed bills that legislators have said, we want these bills, we're gonna file these bills, we prefile them, we're gonna purr in the 2013 legislative session. And there are some of them are very similar to those that were pending at the close of the 2012 session.
I know there's varying opinions here, but my opinion and lots of people that I've talked to, we are definitely against these types of bills coming up. And I know with the Newtown tragedy, there are opinions of both sides. But we wanna know, or I would like to be informed, what it is that we can do in order to get down there to the Capitol to lobby the legislation to not pass any more bills that allow people, more people to carry weapons and to carry weapons in places of education and religious churches.
Well, that's, and I appreciate your comments, but that's very broad. There may be, how many did you say? Pre-filed fourteen? Two may actually get a committee hearing. So you will be down there literally chasing the wind, because you never know which one is going to actually get a committee hearing. We generally don't know which bills are going to be on what's called the Rules Calendar or committee hearings sometimes until the day before or the evening before. And that's why to send out information electronically to you is the most efficient means. And I will do my best to make certain that I'm aware of what is being scheduled for hearings so that you can know. But then it's on you to determine if you want to come down to the hearing room number and sign up and express your opinion as a citizen. And so should a bill get a committee hearing, you have that right. And then you can lobby the Rules Chairman or other members of that committee that you would not, you would like for them not to support that legislation, or you would like for them to support the legislation, depending on your viewpoint. That's why we all have opinions, and that's why this room is just beautiful. We have everyone here participating in the process, and that's what's most important. Because we have the opportunity to debate the issues on both sides and make a collective decision that's in the best interest of our entire community.
I'm gonna go back and then come up after you, then this hero, the clerk.
Good morning.
No, I'm gonna go back and then come up.
My question is directed to Representative Kirby. Who introduced House Bill 82?
House Bill 82?
Is it House Bill 82? Were the teachers...
Twenty-eight, House Bill 28. Representative Paul Babbins is the one that's introduced House Bill 28. And it came from his superintendent and a group of superintendents in his district that, you know, said, we can't afford SROs. We don't have the money in our school budget to do this. What can we do? And they said, you know, we want somebody that's qualified and trained. We don't want anybody who, just because they have a firearm, to be there. So that's where that one came from.
Okay, so this is the two-fold question. Once they're trained, what determines whether or not to shoot or don't shoot? Now, in the event, and the reason I'm asking this is, I am a victim. My son was murdered. And I take this very personally. You all need to sit there and consider, do you want these teachers armed in school with these weapons? And making a decision to shoot or don't shoot? That's a split second decision.
And House Bill 28, it's no teachers. It's just limited to the administration, the principals, and no teachers in the classroom. Little, I don't know, little difference. But is, this bill, as I understand, and I have not read it in its entirety, I talked to Paul briefly, this is about allowing the schools, individual school systems, the option, and they would set up those rules. And they'd be up to your school board and your school districts all around the state to say, one, just because we're allowed to do it, doesn't mean we're going to do it. And number two, if we do it, here's the criteria. We're gonna set up, you know, what we're saying is, if we're gonna allow anything in the schools, they're gonna be trained and qualified and go through the same thing that law enforcement goes through. And that includes requalifying over time as well.
I understand that, and this is my last statement. I understand that and I respect that. But you, as our representatives, if you pass this, I will be the first to be in your face. I'm totally against it. Totally against it. Thank you for your job that you do.
And I'll just, go ahead, sir, if you'll give me a moment, and so that I can respond. And I don't know if you were in the room when I spoke about the bill that I'm drafting. Were you in the room?
Yes.
Okay. In light of Newtown, and based on my knowledge and experience of SROs or school resource options only being in high schools and middle schools, that was clear that those elementary schools are the most vulnerable. So my legislation, my proposed legislation, would allow a person to be employed as a paraprofessional. That's the lowest level. However, that person would be a post-certified law enforcement officer. Because what we can never forget, the budgetary impact of personnel. So you have to have a paraprofessional anyway. So why not have a retired law enforcement officer? Or someone just decides, I love being a police officer, I just don't wanna be on the street. So that person would be the unique and perfect person to be armed in a school as a paraprofessional, and I think in an elementary setting, likely a concealed weapon. But would be some level of protection. Say, for example, if someone did walk in there with a machine gun, and you may lose ten students as opposed to fifty or sixty, like what happened in Newtown. There had to be some level of protection, that they were totally vulnerable. And so that's what I'm working on. And I will pursue it, and I will continue to accept your input in it. However, I do disagree with the House Bill 28. Because my personal knowledge as a lawyer and education professional, I do know that principals and administrators are some of the most stressed people in the world. They are charged with the responsibility of trying to raise academic standards. And trust me, I know that parents can be unreasonable, and they can take those individuals to the end. I would not want that individual to be armed. And I'm gonna tell you that, I would not support that. And to piggyback on what you just said, I've had both sides. I've been in law enforcement. I've been shot several times. I've worked in schools. The last person in the world that needs to have a gun is a teacher or any principal. Because there is no way that they can have the psyche of training that is required to make that shoot-don't-shoot decision, that millisecond decision. Because police officers that have been in the line of fire realize they are responsible for not only when they pull the trigger, where that bullet go. And once again, inside of a school setting in which most schools are concrete structures, those bullets will rip and shake and cause a lot of issues. So, once again, I definitely don't support administrators having firearms. There's a lot of, like you said, unemployed law enforcement professionals that can be recertified, that have been out there, that can address those issues. And that's where it should go. If they can make money for all these other little pet peeve projects, our kids should be the number one pet peeve project.
And before Carol asks her question, Ms. Cobble asks her question, let me just say, one of the problems with this entire debate is that we always start in the middle of the argument. Can we think that this problem starts with the schools? It starts with how do the people get the guns, number one? How do we determine the mental health of the person that has the guns? So I don't start arguments in the middle of them. The argument and the intellectually honest debate must be the entire spectrum from how do you have the gun? How do you enter the school? What do you do for mental health? And then, whether or not what we're proposing to solve the big problem is a Band-Aid or gonna make it worse, or is it the real problem? So I can't even digest this middle argument. I understand that we do need protection, so I am an advocate for that. But I also understand that that protection must be a public policy to stop the assault weapons in the hands of the mentally ill. That has, we have to have that conversation. And I'm a Second Amendment person. And say that those people who carry guns are mine, because I do. But the idea that we are starting at the end of the argument, rather than address what the real problem is to resolve it, is almost intellectually dishonest to me. Ms. Cobble.
First of all, I wanna thank all of y'all for your prior commitment to Rockdale County in our session. Thank you so much. Two things. Senator Ramsey, with the restoration of people with voting, to still voting rights, I'm really very, very interested in that, because registering people to vote, we went across several people who did not, was totally unaware that they could vote when they serve their time. And as Ms. James said, what can we do, you know, to really get that on the floor and get that passed? Because as a Democrat, you know, a lot of, you know, when I'm approaching people out here, that's so often they didn't know. And I think it's important about numbers. And also, like, a little more explanation to the hospital bed tax, because as somebody who does not have insurance, I wanna know, are they planning to cut it, where people with no indigent care will be cut? Or is it, you said Medicaid expansion? This is the first time hearing of it, and I'm really interested, so.
Well, Ms. Cobble, and it really is not a Democrat or Republican issue or a black or a white issue. People make mistakes. Our sons, our daughters, our brothers, our sisters, they make a mistake, for whatever unfortunate reason, they are labeled a felon in this state. But once they have paid their debt to society and fulfill all of their responsibilities to the Board of Pardons and Paroles as a matter of law under the Georgia Constitution, they have a right to vote. The problem, as I said earlier, is people don't know it. When I raised the issue three years ago, the Secretary of State, under two Republican Secretaries of States, they said, you know what, Senator, this is a great idea, which we had thought of. Because if you think about it, when someone presents themselves to a local election board to register to vote, the first question they're going to be asked, are you a felon? And the person said, yes. They said, well, you can't, you can't register. And they walk out the door dismayed, and they do not reacclimate into society. So what this certificate does, and I told the commissioner, just reverse it, reverse the letter that you send them anyway, print it on the back, so that you can't say there's additional cost savings. But what that does is, that is a piece of paper that that citizen can take into an election office and say, here, no explanation necessary. And then those persons can be registered. So I have been working on that in the offseason. I have met with the Chair of the Board of Pardons and Paroles, and I feel confident that we can make some progress with that legislation this time. Yeah, you're an expert on hospital security.
The hospital bed tax, the option to do with, the intent was to assure that care for the indigent population in Georgia was covered. And the way that it went about, and how we addressed the indigent care with all the two million people that are without insurance is really hard. But this was the best method at that time, and maybe the best one this time. But the way it works, the method of it is that the, for example, you may have a nonprofit hospital that actually provides less than two percent indigent care. And they're nonprofit, because they're supposed to give back to that. And every year, they have to do community standards report. Well, the government looked at it and said, you know what? We're going to take for those hospitals, such as Grady, that provides over the nine... We're going to take for those hospitals such as Grady that provides over the ninety percent of indigent care within its region and serves of the, uh, one hundred and fifty-nine counties, actually serves over a hundred and twenty-five counties. And Children's Hospital, which is the most Medicaid, um, condensed hospital, because it's children, provides so much indigent, indigent care. Why can't we take some of these monies, tax the other hospitals, take those monies, and provide care to the hospitals that are performing the majority of care to the indigent population? So, that's the theory behind it. Is that the best method? Maybe not. That's what I meant, that it may be the best now, but we have to look at, uh, the CMOs, how it relates, because it only treats twenty-nine percent of the Medicaid population, how will we move forward? But right now, it may be the solution to providing care to those hospitals that disproportionately serve the indigent population. Because some of the nonprofit, I always say it's only a tax status, but some of the nonprofit actually provide less indigent care than the for-profit, um, hospitals. So, right now, that is the vehicle that levels out the care that like Grady does and like Children's Hospital, um, does. But we're still looking at developing other options at this point. Okay, we're gonna get these two ladies, the clerk first, this lady, then we're gonna come back to each other.
All right. Well, let me first again thank you for making yourselves available to us this morning. You don't have to do it, we appreciate it. Wanna make a comment first, on the, um, issue of felons voting. They also cannot serve as a juror unless their voting rights have been, their civil and voting rights have been restored. So, we deal with this on a regular basis in the courts. One thing that needs to be understood is that it is not automatic. That after you've served your time, you don't automatically get your rights restored. There's a process that you have to go through, the Board of Pardons and Paroles. That process is onerous. People don't know about it, and so there's education needed on that end of the question. My real concern this morning is that Rockville County needs jobs in economic development.
Yes.
And my question, I know you don't wanna make a decision this morning, but it would be helpful if we knew where you stand on the issue of parimutial bedding. Because for Rockville County, that's low hanging fruit. We would love to see it legal in the state, and we'd love to have you get behind it to bring those opportunities to Rockville County. So, if you would, give us an indication of where you stand and, uh, how you plan to be involved in that legislation this session.
No, let, let, let me start first, because it is automatic under the Constitution. However, Board of Pardons and Paroles have prolegated rules to make it difficult for, uh, members to reintegrate into society. And so, that's, that is the problem. So, they have the power. What you have to understand is the Board of Pardons and Paroles are like in many Supreme Court in the state of Georgia. The governor cannot tell them what to do. They have seven-year appointed terms by the governor. Even the successor governor cannot alter those terms. So, they do what they want to do. They do make it difficult for people to re-acclimate into society. You are absolutely correct, correct, Madam Clerk, and we do need to melt some of that wall down. Uh, with respect to parimutial bedding, what you all may recall is that last session, Representative Gysinger has, uh, in the House has taken the lead on parimutial bedding in the state. He's, he's worked on that bill for the last several years. Well, they, uh, got in the mud, literally, in the House. And because I had already been working with the city of Conyers, uh, to support parimutial bedding, because we really have the only infrastructure in, in the entire state to have to start. And so, the government, Lieutenant Governor, the last several years have had opposed it. So, I met with Lieutenant Governor, and I said, listen, I know you guys are opposed to it, but we have an interest, infrastructure, and at least consider a pilot project in Conyers, Rockville County. And he says, okay, let's see where it goes. I filed my legislation, and as a result of them getting in the mud in the House, my legislation was actually used to, 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 uh, advance the, uh, the debate. However, we got to the end and got stuck in the mud again and just could not, uh, get it passed. I have met with, um, the representative of the horse industry recently. And, and at that time, and now, they still say that Rockville County is the best infrastructure for the two-year-old ponies, which still means substantial revenue for this region, should we be able to get it. So, that is legislation that we will continue to support, and then I'll yield to Tom.
So, that would be a yes for me?
That's a yes for me. That would be a yes.
We can make this real simple. Uh, I was born in Parish, Kentucky. My daddy was working on the bell farm right, like, Clayburn Farms. Daddy was born and raised on Crestwood Farm in Lexington, Kentucky. I've been to the horse races since I can, old enough to walk. Um, you know, I think to, to some of the opponents, uh, demise, uh, spent a lot of time at the horse track with my Baptist preacher, um, in Kentucky. Because they are all, if you wanna find a preacher seeing Lexington, they're in Keeneland, you go to the track. So, I am a big supporter of horse racing, parimutial wagering. You know, being from central Kentucky, there is a, and I can tell people, there is a little bit of difference. There's a special love of the horse in that area. You know, as I tell people, we would go watch 'em run. They're magnificent creatures, to hear 'em thunder down that stretch, whether it's a parimutial window or not. You know, the fact I got two dollars on there, uh, you know, and to me, it's not about gambling even. It's, it's really a contest of skills. Am I smart enough to figure out what these horses are, these A horses are gonna do and what order they're gonna come in? And I don't even think about it as gambling. I go to casinos to gamble, I go to the races to watch the horses run, and it's an event. If you've got any reservation at all, I would encourage you on the first Saturday in May not to go to Churchill Downs to the Derby, but to go to Keeneland in Lexington, and you will see families picnicking over the entire grounds. And it's a beautiful old traditional track there in Lexington. And the families out there, it's a day, it's an event, it's a happening that people need to, to really experience and enjoy. So, uh, you can put me down pretty, pretty solidly in that yes, however.
I voted for it last year, and I'll vote for it again. I'm from New Orleans, and I can go out to tracks, my life. So, I think it would be a great economic development, a boon for, uh, Rockville County.
Uh, yes, I do support it as well, um, until next Monday at ten, I do have a horse park in my district. And I think the last time I spoke with, uh, Representative, um, who was the Representative that?
Gysinger.
Yes. Um, the, the information was they didn't wanna pass two-sen type things, 'cause we're going, we're going through the alcohol referendum. And so, I'm hopeful that, uh, we'll get past.
Twenty thirteen is a sin year.
So, I'm hoping that we will, uh, we'll be able to, um, get it through this year. They just didn't wanna do parimutial bedding and alcohol referendum at the same time.
Representative D. Doctor Saver said a yes, and mine is just simply yes. Next question. Somebody else?
Hi, thank you, uh, Representative Rockville County. I'm Laura Spencer Izebu. I'm a mental health professional psychologist. And, uh, I like to see emphasis put on more mental health programs for children. Because I have parents every day who sit, and they try to find programs for their children. There are none. And we're not talking about kids in middle school. We're talking about kids in elementary schools coming in in kindergarten with problems. So, I think like you, Pam, I think that guns, not necessarily everything, we need to start to the bottom. And that's with mental health programs. And with the cuts in school system, there are not enough money for teachers, there are not, especially for psychologists. Because if you remember, that was a psychologist who got shot in Colorado. We sit with principals every day, we sit with irate parents every day too. And it wasn't anything unusual for me to think that that was a school psychologist who got shot. Because we do, we get up and we see what's wrong in the school, because we're called upon to do that every day. So, we do really, really need money for school psychologists. And I was really, really glad that we got that emphasis when the shooting happened in Colorado with, um, the school psychologist and the principal. And that just nattered to me. We sit with them every day. We have parents who are just really irate. We also have parents who are frustrated too. Because we have kindergarten kids who come in with real, real problems. And we need to solve those problems. And if, unless you start at the bottom, they're, they're gonna become juniors and seniors in high school, and they're gonna have mental issues. So, it, it's been since Rosalyn Cotter was the last person who put money into mental health programs in the state of Georgia. No one else has really addressed it. It's a sin, it's an illness that no one likes to talk about. But until we get programs for kids and solve their mental health issues, we are gonna have the guns. We're gonna have a lot of other things in this society. So, I like to see money spent for school psychologists, um, especially my system. We got cut our salary, which I think was really, uh, awful. But I do like to see mental health professionals looked at again and put programs, um, for kids who need this help. And I also like to see this, uh, detention center, 'cause my husband was the one who designed the detention center in, in that county. So, really like to see one in Rockville County. So, I thought I'd plug into my husband.
Start here, and then we're gonna go to, start back at the back, so after we're gonna get, um, your way.
I just wanted to piggyback on what she was saying about mental health issues. My son was recently diagnosed back in April of last year as having epilepsy. Sixteen years old, in a public school setting. And the type of seizures he was having aren't the ones that we typically are used to seeing when people are having the jerking and the eyes roll around the back of his. The kind he was having is called focal point or abscot seizures, and it looks like your daydreams. Where you're just not focusing on the issue. Uh, focal point or abscot seizures. Um, the issue I found is that most people don't wanna deal with a mental health illness, um, and issue. And, um, we go to children's at Epplestein because one of the neurologists there started a child, uh, center for, for kids that have mental health issues and have epilepsy. And when I tell you it looks like those people in there giving away something free, there's so many people in there, the officers are always jam-packed. Mental health is real. You can't look at somebody and tell if they have mental health issues. You can't. So, there's no way to diagnose that physically. And even going through the process of trying to get him diagnosed, uh, internally, that, that, it took us like eight months to get him diagnosed. And that is very, very frustrating for parents who don't know what's wrong with their child. One thing I can say is, once you have a mental health issue diagnosed, it does not go away. So, that's something that we have to deal with. And we can no longer put our kids in a closet in a room and pretend like the issue doesn't exist. We have to deal with it. And so, I'm really looking for my representative, um, to help, to support the legislation. There are no support groups for parents that have children, uh, teenagers, uh, with seizures. None whatsoever, not anyone. They wanna put my son in a category as a grown-up. They even tried to have, tricked me into getting him into being admitted into a three-day psychiatric facility, because I refuse to let them put him on psychotropic drugs. I, I just think let's deal with the issue at hand, I just don't think medication, medication is not a solution, in my opinion. The psychiatrist we go, the psychiatrist we go to is right around the corner from the Rockville Dem's office. He is so overwhelmed. There are not enough psychiatrists that to treat these, these kids and their issues. He's all, well, he just quit. Um, I'm just being honest with you, I got a call from the, from the office two days ago and said, we're looking for somebody else right now. Even the services through, through my, my, um, insurance department, through my insurance, they only give you X amount of sessions with the psychiatrist or with the therapist. Or, and my son has seen four or five different, different people, because there's no holistic approach to mental health. We have psychiatrists, we have neurologists, we have life skills coach, we have a family therapist that we see, and he also sees a therapist for depression. Just imagine all those doctors, how much time I'm spending in a doctor's office? Not that, I'm not complaining, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, there has to be a better system and a better way to mental health issues.
Thank you so much. Ladies, it's the last girl, and then like, and then.
Just, just let me speak to that quickly while, while we're talking about it. You're absolutely right. All of you are right about that. Unfortunately, in austere times, there are issues in services like mental health and other social services that the government cuts first. And unfortunately, it's a trickle-down. And so, then that's why you have sheriff's department and police departments locking up children who are really undiagnosed, have undiagnosed illnesses, but we treat them as criminals. And, and sheriff's officers have less resources, police officers have less resources to assess these individuals so that they can, uh, have the proper placement and receive the proper treatment. But I think we have a unique opportunity here in Rockville County, Dan. We have new leadership in sheriff's department and new leadership in the probate judge. And what you may not know is that the probate judges have legal authority over individuals from seventeen to twenty-one. And, but they have, I, I don't know of a single probate office that has taken on that level of responsibility that they have under the Constitution. So, I think it is timely that we have some type of community task force to talk about, okay, sheriff, you have X in your budget, probate judge, you have X in your budget, juvenile court, you have X in your budget. Let's get together as a collective and have some assessment and get these children and young adults the proper services that they need, so that then on the other end, we don't classify them as felons. And we serve the community as a whole. And I'll tell you, ladies and gentlemen, as well, I know for a fact, that's why we have a lot of the discipline issues that we have in our schools. Because the children are ill, they're not necessarily bad children, the, for, for the most part, they just are, have undiagnosed illnesses that their parents cannot afford or have access to the services that they need, and then we stick them in alternative schools and we call them bad kids. And then, at some point, they're going to become discouraged and dismayed, and then they will stick a gun in your face at the service.
Exactly.
So, I, I think that, that the timing and the opportunity is right for that kind of conversation, and I look forward to being a part. Mr. Chairman, we're gonna depend on you to, uh, to help us, uh, work, work along those lines, because if we don't listen, it's less expensive to fix it on the front end than to deal with it on the back. And we know the cost is three or four times that. And, uh, but it's just gonna take a collective effort for everyone to work on that, okay?
And we gotta start. Because the only problem I have with the criminal justice reform bill was that it allowed the expansion of mental health courts within the criminal justice system. And as a social worker, and unashamedly, the sister of a brother who I'm the guardian of, who was, was diagnosed as schizophrenic in his late twenties, it is without a doubt that the mental health system is there to serve people who are patients, not the criminal justice system, it's mixing two different types. But they, um, Elaine, the, the young lady right behind you?
Thank you, Representative Stigerson, three things. Uh, one is that there are a lot of good questions that have come out of this session. Uh, and I need to know, uh, I think it's incumbent upon us to find out how we can follow up with you. And then to find what kind of support you need from the community to make sure that you get the help that you need in order to help us. The second thing has to do with the gun issue. Uh, that's very, very important to me. I know that in the aftermath of Newtown, uh, Newtown, there, people, it's a very emotional time. And people are very vulnerable, and they may make rash decisions in order to help another group accomplish their own goal. Uh, having to do with gun and increasing the, the number of guns. My position is, is that this is a shared responsibility, should be a shared community responsibility, and we need to look at it holistically. From not only the people who currently have guns, but who it is we're trying to license in order to have those guns. Because just because a, a, an individual is an administrator, the administration, people administer, who are administration in our schools are representative of the community at large. Which means if we have ten percent of people in the community who may have, uh, emotional issues who may be stressed out, who may be whatever, they're gonna be, they're gonna be represented in the administration. So, we need to send everybody through the same kind of check and balance system as we do with people who are trying to register for guns who are not in administration. I have to think there are people in the community who can be called upon to help us to protect the children in our schools. That's, not necessarily so with a gun on their hip or one that's concealed in a purse. The third thing has to do with, um, I know the last time, last year sometime, Senator Ramsey, you talked about legislation you were trying to get passed for individuals who are suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. There is, uh, we have an increasing number of young men and women who are coming back, having fought. And, um, a lot of them are suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. And sometimes, if they're stopped by the police, their behavior may exhibit behavior that officers are used to seeing, and somebody may be under influence of drugs, or under the influence of alcohol. Their behavior may be, appear to be, uh, irrational. So, um, I think that we probably need to take another hard look at that. Uh, we all have relatives, cousins, uncles, brothers who are. Uh, we all have relatives, cousins, uncles, brothers who are coming back from the war. And we don't need to have everybody locked into the same fabric. What we need to do is that you go proactive and perhaps a more caring approach to taking care of people who are taking care of us.
Well, and lastly, unfortunately, you must have missed that meeting, I'm happy to, to. Did pass, and the governor did sign it into law. And that was two years ago, actually. And, and I'll help you know that a gentleman got himself elected from Columbus, Georgia for the sole purpose of having that legislation repealed. Because some veteran's group took, veteran groups took the position that it was labeling them as crazy or schizophrenic or whatever. And the, the whole goal, as you said, was to assist them. And I'll also have him know where his efforts defeated. The state of Georgia Department of Driver Services have now taken that bill, which was the first of its kind in the entire nation two years ago, to allow you to have a medical condition cited on your driver's license other than eyeglass prescriptions. So the state of Georgia has now taken that legislation and is using it as a model where I, I believe there are fourteen other infirmities now that you can choose to have listed on your driver's license to alert law enforcement and emergency personnel when they encounter you that you have something going on that, that, uh, may be the reason for these behaviors that you're exhibiting. So I'm, I'm happy about it, I'm excited about it, and we have, uh, that is a vehicle to do some great things.
Tom, if it also allow for the veterans who come back with traumatic brain injury, um, diagnosis, they have some of the same type of symptoms.
That, 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 that was the genesis of the bill, that was, that was the purpose, but now it's expanded. You know what, we deal with five thousand bill bills on a kid, and I should know that since I.
Let me tell you, it's under, it's under the veterans, it's, it's not a bill number anymore, it's an act, and I'm gonna tell you the, um.
I just wanted to add, uh, my, my young brother was with the Big Red One, uh, was blown up and shot in Baghdad, retired on disability in San Antonio. And as a, you know, sergeant first class, one of the things, talking to him, and been working with our congressional delegation that I know well, Congressman Wood, all Congressman Brown, uh, I met Congressman Johnson. I now have three congressional districts that will co-mingle, having talked to him. But a lot of veterans, there's Veterans Department out of Washington, a lot of federal things. One of the things that, there's two things we've got to do. Number one, veterans hospitals got to be top notch. And there are some that are great, Brook Medical Center, uh, down in San Antonio, that my brother was in for three years, fabulous hospital. But then there's some that just aren't getting the job done. And we've got, and I told them, we've got to get a standard at the veterans hospital, if these guys and gals are getting the best care we can give them in this country. The second thing is, and the part that's missing that I've been pushing them to do is, by what we have trained these warriors to do, they are not people that are going to go get help and say, I'm having some problems. So we've got to go to them. We've got to put in something in place where we're following up on them. Where he, where, where my brother got, they hit an IED in their, their truck, he got blown up, he lost two of his squad members. It has some emotional pain that comes with that, but he also has some short-term memory, that concussion syndrome and stuff that comes up now and then, and it's a, you know, but he's still, he's not one that's going to go get help. But family members actually picking up on some of this, we kind of made him go get some help, and it, and it's working for him. So I was in the Veterans Affairs Committee member up in Washington, I told them, okay, we've got to do something that we're going to go talk to these people. Go find them, see what's going on with them, because they're not coming on us.
Thank you for sharing that. Have one, like you asked, no, you pay ask Jimmy, Miss Smiley, and then to Mr. Tracy, then we're gonna have to.
How you doing?
Fine, how are you?
I'm doing well. Put a couple things in my notes, so I just wanted to make sure that I have it. Um, two things, right quick, as quickly as possible. Uh, we've talked about and heard different, uh, ideas and perspectives and feelings about weapons in the, in education system. Often when we're in forums like this, we're thinking public, and we think only, in this case, uh, I don't want us to only think about public education. So one of my concerns is regardless of what, which bill, whether it's been introduced or what will be introduced, that, how will any bill in law be applied to not just the public education, but private education as well as publicly funded, private owned institutions and organizations? Of course, uh, training, 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 with how, how often, how well certified and a continued training of those individuals, if they are going to have weapons, uh, that should reduce your liability and so forth. And my other concern is, Rock Hill County is an aging, a great majority of aging population. Uh, I do have some concerns of how are we looking forward, uh, with medication or with the medical, having resources for not only those that, uh, that will be needing more resources for medical, but, uh, a lot of people are opting to keep their parents as they age or what have you at home. So what kinds of things are we really putting in place to, even though we, we, like you said, the hospital bed tax and all these things, therefore the organizations, but how does it positively or adversely affect those people that are trying to do, uh, take care for their, for their aging aunts, uncles, fathers, and mothers and so forth? So those are some concerns of mine, um, as we move forward, definitely in this year and looking down the road. Of course, whatever we do now, it affects us two, three, five years down the road, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And just very briefly, the demographics of every community is changing. While we're aging more, because the baby boomers are gonna take up that portion. Bear in mind, for the first time in the history, um, the average age is being reduced, uh, for the lifespan is being reduced. But it is up to us to look at it realistically, because when we talk about hospital bed tax, we're talking about medical care versus healthcare and how you age and how you provide services to caregivers. So we take that very serious, we're gonna have those discussions. And why it's important for you all to sign up the email, because we're gonna, in our delegation meetings, we're gonna have discussions related to education, because we've talked about it, and we're gonna have those long discussions. So really, please sign up so that you can get the notices for our meetings.
I just have a couple of comments about the discussion. I respect the woman who, you know, lost her, her son, and that's a terrible tragedy as, as we know. I've had, uh, been able to talk to people in her situation, but take, we're all in this room together. I don't even know if it's legal to carry a gun in this, in this building. But if somebody's carrying a gun here, I'll be thankful, because some crazy person could walk through that door and start shooting anybody in this room. Been the Usher coordinator and just ended after thirteen years at First Baptist Conyers. And one of the things that's always been on my mind as I stand at that back door is, at any moment, somebody could come in with a gun and start shooting people in here, and I sure as hope and wish that my church members were packing so that they could turn around and point all their guns towards that guy and take him out. Okay? Because we've got kids there, we've got adults there, we got to protect our people. And we, and, and I agree, Senator Ramsey, with your idea and concept, that professionals that are retired and that should protect our kids in school. We can't have this Pollyanna idea that we're gonna have the utopian society where everybody's nice, we don't, we don't have that. The amendments, the Bill of Rights was drawn up for a reason, it was to protect us as citizens. The gun, the Second Amendment isn't about hunting. The Second Amendment is about protecting freedom and our individual freedoms given to us by God, not by legislators, not by presidents, and certainly not by police officers. These rights are given to us by God to be as individuals, to protect ourselves, we are all equal. And so we have the right to protect our homes, to protect our churches, to protect our businesses. And the founding fathers, uh, in their wisdom said that the militia should be a group of people that are citizens, that should all be trained. And we don't train people, kids, I grew up in a city, we didn't, we didn't get trained on how to use a gun. You, you know, if somebody lived in the country, they learned how to shoot. I think we got two issues. One, we got rid of the Bible in our schools. And I think you all make that, it should be bill number one every year until it's mandatory, that, because it's a moral code. And all the mental problems that are going on are not, are not all just mental problems, in my opinion. Their lack of moral code. Kids can't decipher what's right and what's wrong anymore from what's being given to them on their TV screens and their little handhelds and, I mean, have you seen the blood and guts on, on TVs and movies for rated PG movies? I mean, it, it's, we've got to address all these social concerns, because mental health is also what goes into the brain. And I know parents that let their, the kids watch R-rated movies and X-rated movies and everything else, from the time, they, they just think that their brains can take that in and then decide what's right and wrong. No, we're a product of our environment. So I think we got to address the real concerns. A, teach kids from the time they're small, if they're at camps with the sheriff's department or whatever, how to handle and use a gun properly, and why you would use a gun. And two, we need to get moral code taught back in our school system. And then maybe the next generation will have whole families again, because the Bible teaches about being a man and a woman in a marriage, and that's the most healthy thing a kid can have. We have the problems we have right now, I believe, because we don't have the moral fa- fabric that, that our grandparents had.
Thank you very much for your comments. Final, final, yours, and then the final comment would be just.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank you all for coming. Um, I think this has been a very healthy discussion as far as the tragedy that happened in Newtown, Connecticut. Uh, Senator Ramsey, you and I have a long history of going back and discussing the Second Amendment issue. You know, I'm very big proponent of that. Of course, you supported the bill in two thousand and ten that repealed, uh, an old Jim Crow law that's been on the books for a hundred and forty years. Um, a couple of things I want to point out here. Number one, the bill you had is a very common sense bill, okay? This is what the NRA suggested after the Newtown tragedy from last year. They said, let's put post-certified law enforcement officers in our school system. And yes, you're right, here in Rock Hill County, the sheriff's department pays for resource officers here in the high school. Uh, the school reimbursed the sheriff's department for the officers in, um, middle schools, okay? The sheriff's department pays for the high school resource officers.
Are there county police officers?
Uh, in some cases, yes, but like in Heritage, um, as well as Salem, that'll be a Rock Hill County Sheriff's Department. Uh, but yes, the departments do pay for, um, those officers. The school system reimbursed the sheriff's department for those resource officers in the middle school. Okay? Now, the thing I want to point out here, uh, both the bill that you're introducing and the bill that Mr. Kirby mentioned, they're not that far apart. Uh, you're talking about putting former law enforcement, retired law enforcement agents, they're post-certified officers. Mr. Kirby mentioned a bill that also includes post-certified people that are being put into the school system. Okay? So at what point do you differentiate two post-certified officers as different people? They are essentially one and the same. I see the point Mr. Kirby is making. Here in Rock Hill, we have a certain need, and no, we do not need administrators in our school system that have, have guns. We have a sheriff's department and a city police department that, yes, provide these officers for them. However, down in Jessup, Georgia, or maybe down in Waycross, Georgia, they may not have those same resources, but that may be where, uh, Mr. Kirby's bill fits in. But we're still talking about post-certified law enforcement officers, that's the same officer that's walking around here out on our streets and our community, um, they are post-certified, okay? So that is an issue. Uh, like I said, I don't see a whole lot of difference between your two bills that you, we discussed here. Um, post-certified law enforcement officers in schools, we've already got that here in Rock Hill County. Um, and yes, I think it's a great idea that you have to maybe look at putting these in elementary schools. But we've got to at least offer options. Uh, yes, and I do believe that this is a mental health problem like we've discussed here as well. So like I said, I think it's been a healthy discussion, and I know that your bills are not written in concrete, they're going to change over the next several months as we move into April and May before they're ratified. Uh, I would like very much to stay in touch with you.
And, and I'll just briefly respond, thank you for that comment. I haven't read House Bill twenty, but as I understand it, it would allow principals, is that correct? And administrators. And, and they call principals administrators, but there are various levels of administration.
Yep.
I'm saying, now, if there is a, a area assistant superintendent that's responsible for riding around and for the oversight of four or five different high schools, I would have a problem with that individual being post-certified and having a weapon. But I know the stress that principals and assistant principals are under every single day. And you have parents who do come to those schools and challenge their last nerve. I just would not be comfortable with that person.
I will agree with you, okay?
Even if, even if that principal or APs was post-certified, I still would not feel comfortable, because I know the stress and rigors they are under, not only from parents, but from their staff.
Yeah.
Okay? But, but a regional, uh, a person or someone who works in the central office, not, I don't have that much of a concern. But right now, I'm staying in the lane with what my heart has led me to do with respect to my particular bill.
I will agree with you simply for the fact that that administrator chose to be a school administrator and not a law enforcement officer.
Can you have another meeting, maybe like the last of Jan-, uh, February or March? We are, and we're gonna be sending out emails, because really, the, the question is philosophically, one is that you're retired post-certified, one is that you're an administrator and get post-certified. So that's how you're gonna have to end up, um, making that distinction. And we're gonna be talking about it amongst ourselves, we're gonna, all of us are gonna have everyone's emails, we're gonna be sending those out as we meet as a delegation, so that we can keep you informed where we are.
And remember, no one of us is as smart as all of us.
That's why, that's why we have to.
Why we've got a hundred eighty with that. No one of us is as smart as all of us, and we will get together and, and I think, I think we, everybody's got the right ideas of, of where we want to get to and starting, like you said, in the early thing. Now, how we get there is, there'll be a lot of discussion.
That we're gonna be discussing. And then, final question is, um, Sam Williams, but yeah.
Thank you for this, uh, second round, and I hate to be the dead horse, but I have to. I'm very disappointed for the, for this afternoon, I probably won't even eat lunch today. Uh, because I, okay, I'm from LA, and I watched the LA Rams, I watched that thing play out. Have you considered the fact that Mr. Blank may get disgusted and other cities are watching this? Say, Arthur, bring it to us. If we lose the Falcons, I wouldn't want to be a magistrate. I wouldn't want to be downtown if some, especially when he's saying, I'll spend my money. I think we talked about a lot of things in here today about spending other people's money. But if Arthur Blank is saying, I'm willing to put up the money, I'm going through the whole ride, based on, if you look at the NFL, all thirty-two teams is out there, a lot of cities got their teams, because the legislators in those cities said, you know what, take that team, you can get out. You can go, and we won't have the Falcons. And I would, again, I would address that, see, I would hate to be a legislator and find out if Arthur Blank was offered over in Alabama or Tennessee somewhere, okay, Brandon, to have you guys, and, and seeing, I can't get clear clarification from you to say, yes, this is what we're gonna go with, because Arthur's gonna spend his money. He's not asking to touch bears, he's just letting him do what he want to do. No, and that's what not least, Los Angeles is tearing down the convention center, so that this be there, you're going to build a stadium.
No, no one's, no one's disagreeing here, no one's disagreeing.
Because I think. Let me hope you feel this.
Please, please hear me with my emotions.
Um, then we'll go here and see the reasons, because we said, I thought it was clear, once we get a little bit more information, because we're all feeling it, we're gonna come back to you. So we want you to hear us, we want you to feel us, but I think you want us to do diligence on your behalf. Because we feel it emotionally, we have to feel it not only in our hearts, we got to feel it in our mind, and we will be back sooner than later. So you can feel it.
Okay, I'll hear you.
Madam Chair, thank you. I, I've got a question, but I do want to make a couple comments on behalf of the library, if you don't mind. But my question relates to all the structures going around the country relating to secession from the union and the public surface. relating to secession from the Union on the part of certain states. What's happening in Georgia? What is that? Is it getting any real traction here?
I have not heard anything. There was some proposed legislation last year about convening constitutional conventions and that would really be the precursor for having that kind of a conversation, but I just have not heard it. And I think right now Georgians are now focused on being collectively working to deal with the economic downturn that we have, to deal with our education and to also deal with, you know, mental health and even sports and I mentioned that.
Did you miss it there?
I hope we're past that, but I haven't heard it. If we're here, we'll certainly bring you through it.
Got you. Thank you, Chief. Well, what I want to do on behalf of the library, I chair the Rockville County Nancy Green Library Board and some of you may not know, but Nancy Green Library is with the help, and thank you Chairman Oden, for helping us to get the Manifold Greatness exhibit to come to Rockville County. We are one of forty communities throughout the nation. In fact, we're going to be the last community that has the opportunity to have this national exhibit. It's a celebration of the creation and imprinting of the King James versions of the Bible. We want to bring hundreds, thousands of people into Rockville, May 29th through...
July 12th.
Through July 12th of this year. And I'm asking everybody in this room, if you represent a group or organization, that I, Asharla, who's also a member of the Rockville County Library Board, in fact, she is the Member Emeritus, she's been everything on the board, she can give us credit so much better than I can. But we want to showcase Rockville and I want to thank Chairman Oden for giving us this opportunity to have this exhibit. Guys, we need you to let us come before you're sitting with your church organizations, whatever, so that we can get them involved and understand what it means to Rockville to have this exhibit coming to us. We also want to ask you to please, you know, yourselves, get involved in this exhibit. Help us to support it through your organizations. We're gonna need money for receptions and all kinds of things. Not only do we want to have the national exhibit, but we want to have some supporting kinds of activities going on around just that Rockville County is the only county that did, that had this exhibit to come to there. So I'm asking you to please, get involved in Manifold Greatness, give us the opportunity to come and speak at your various churches, your various organizations and other places where we might come, the South Rockville Civic Association, the NAACP, whatever the case may be, we want to come and push this and get you all involved. And our legislators as well, we need you involved, okay? We might have a Rockville County Legislative Delegation reception on behalf of the Manifold Greatness exhibit is the kind of thing we're looking at. So again, thank you for what you do on behalf of Rockville, for coming and doing these kinds of things for us on a monthly basis or whatever we need. We really appreciate that and we welcome you to the library anytime. We apologize for our speaker system. It's a 1988 cable. Somebody get Mike on a doughy in the cable, get impressed.
All you need is a cable?
That's all we need is a cable. All that's about it. All right? Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much and as our number one librarian says, yeah, I'm not allowed to go on to do that. I just want to make sure that we know if it's always say, because there was a librarian that took me underfoot, I was able to learn in a community where we may not have had resources, I was able to learn how to travel through my mind. I need to do a justice system and there is outdated now, but where I grew in Detroit, that's what we did. I have supported libraries, I still do, no matter where they are, it is access to our entire families to learn and to reference and I always say that. I'm gonna ask for each legislators, they might have closing remarks, but, and I'm not gonna say anything after the Senator's speech, but to thank you very much for, first of all, allowing us to serve you, allowing us to come back and continue to talk because we don't have to agree, but we must communicate and know what we disagree on so that we can develop good, sound public policy. So I thank all of you all for coming here today. I'm gonna start to my lap with Representative Tom Kirby because we want to be able to bring government to you and you know why we are voting and hold us accountable for how we vote, Representative.
Well, thank you all for coming out today. It's always great to come to Rockville because you all support these activities with fewer better than me, the counties I'm in, of all the people in Glenetta County, it's by towns and there'll be eight or nine different town meetings, but it's always a good group here. Just a couple of things, I always close with the same thing. Number one, the cell phone on my hip, six seven seven nine zero five two five two. That is my personal cell phone number, call it, it's on all my cards, if you don't have it, want to write it down, anytime, I give that out to everybody. The second thing is, just sharing a story with you, and this is true for just about everybody I've met in the general scene. But back in March in the special election night, I was elected about five minutes before the polls closed and I was out waving the signs, you know, getting the last second voters in that big parking lot with the red light. This lady had just voted, come up to the light and stopped and she simply said, "Mr. Kirby, please don't let us down." And I can assure you, those words resonate on with me, but to everybody down there. And we may not always agree, but we're going to do everything we can not to let you down. Thank you for coming out and if there's anything I can do for you, let me know.
Okay, just after most of the meeting, being a new grandmother, my daughter, my son is sick with the flu, my husband called her last night, and the baby lives outside, her mom has the flu, my mom and everybody's mom. So I thought I could yell the baby's name, but I realized, that's why I have older children and not babies, okay? But she is the love of my life, she's precious. But I'm sure my fellow colleagues will catch me up on everything that I miss going in and out with the baby. And so, but I would like to say that I'm always successful. If you call me, it's best to text me or email because you will never really try to get me on the telephone, you just probably, I'm just gonna tell you that. I am a, this is a technological side, you know, we're in how texts. If you email me or you text me, you can get me immediately. If you call me, the likelihood that I listen to my message on my cell phone, our phone is very unlikely. I just want y'all to know that.
Well, we're gonna provide the best, what I'm gonna tell you today, we're gonna give the best contact information for everyone that's sitting at this table, all that information back to you.
Yes, she said she wasn't gonna say anything else after Senator Ramsey's, right? Anyway, um...
You know her lawyer, has he spoke yet?
Oh, before, that's right, that's right, she got ahead. So anyway, I look forward to working with you all this year and any issues that you have, we are aggressively ready to pursue. But one thing I really want to get on is education, education, education and livable wages. I just believe that, you know, now that we're celebrating the 150 years of the Massaker Proclamation and the watch on Washington and King Birthday is coming up, we know that he died so that people could have livable wages. So I want to make sure that everyone in Georgia, while we all write to work state, that means that people will have wages that are in measure with their line of living here in the state of Georgia and also that parents, when their children are failing, be able to give them the resources to be able to take off from their jobs without penalty to go and speak to the teachers at their school. Because we say we want children to be educated, but then when the parents try to get there, you know, some employees will not allow them to or be involved in their children's lives. So it's almost like a double-edged sword. So I want to make sure that we look at those things in the state of Georgia. And anything else that you all want to talk about, we're here and we're ready to work. And thank you very much for allowing me to say.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out today and thank my fellow representatives for being here. It is, you know, a commitment to us and we're here, we're committed, we're here to do what you need us to do. And again, I think everybody has my phone number. If you don't, I have some new cards, I'll give you my phone number, you can always call me anytime that you need me, anytime of the day, you know, or night, I am available. And I appreciate everything that everyone has done here in the community as well. Thanks. And finally, I have to talk after the Senator's speech, so finally, our Senator, Ronald Ramsey.
And again, Happy New Year, everyone, and it is my honor to have the opportunity to continue to serve you. I'm just overwhelmed and overjoyed to see all of the citizens who were out this morning to care about our community, to know what's going on, to give your input about what you think we need to do on your behalf. And so continue to be in touch with us. My personal cell is four zero four two eight one nine nine four eight. And my email is ramseylaw, R-A-M-S-E-Y-L-A-W, at bell south dot net. And I will appreciate you all communicating with me so that I could lock you into my system. And again, I will be sending out email newsletters frequently. You can respond back to those to let us know what you think about any particular issue and we'll be happy to respond and get you the information. But again, you are invited to come to the Capitol anytime, three oh three A. Mrs. Jerry Pringle, a Rockville citizen and now a legislative aide at the Capitol, and the Capitol number is four zero four four six three, four zero four four six three two five nine eight. And she'll be happy to assist you and I'm excited about the opportunities that we get. Thank you all. God bless you.
Very good.